August 24th, council meeting to order. We're back from break and we have an Eagle Scout in our audience. And if you'd, Andrew Root, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and lead us into, with the pledge of allegiance?
Right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Ring of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of July 13, 2015, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet again in three weeks prior to council. The Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. The Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held and nothing to report.
Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
And Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have anything scheduled and I do not have anything to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance and one for special legislation. For finance, we have 15-135 budget amendments, 15-136 amending codified ordinance 13301, association memberships, 15-137 amending utility billing lookback period, 15-138 rezone 110 West Union from R3 to MU, 15-139 rezone 139 West Liberty from C2 to PF, 140 create ED and marketing associate position, 15-141 transfer requests for number 001 to number 145, 15-142 increase PO 2015 597 HD supply. And the Special Legislation Committee has one item, 15-143 House Bill 5 income tax ordinance. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome council back from your break. The Healthy Strides, the walks will continue at various county parks with different health professionals giving a brief talk and then a walk. These are on the second and fourth Saturday of each month. It started in April and will conclude October 24th. Good exercise, good information, a good way to see the many county parks and the amenities they have to offer. The walks and talks are both done in an hour from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And the park locations are on the Healthy Medina website, which is www.healthymedina.com, or the Medina County Parks website, which is www.madinacountyparks.com. The Healthy Stride was canceled for Saturday, this past Saturday, August 8/22, because they didn't want to compete with the International Festival. And the International Festival was very well attended. I was up there in the afternoon and I'd just like to commend Matt Wiederhold and Main Street Medina for an event that seems to be getting larger and larger and had very good turnout and many, many families just enjoying the day up on our square. Oremaco is having their next jazz concert on September 5th from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. up on our square. And it's the Bobby Salvaggio Jazz Orchestra. And it's a free concert. Folks are welcome to come up with your blankets or chairs on the square that evening. Life Support Team is having a Citizen Academy. It's Wednesday evening, starting September 9th through October 7th, and it's from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. each evening at the Medina Hospital. And you may contact LST if interested. There are still a few slots available. And last but not least, the Tunnel to Towers Race is a fundraiser for veterans who are either triple or quadruple amputees as a result of their service. And they build what's considered smart homes where the cabinets and appliances and all of the operations of the home can be used with devices to make the homes usable for these service folks. We are one of nine cities in the country that is hosting this race. And the race in Medina will be on Sunday, September 20th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. on our public square. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, and I'm sure you're excited about, the general fund budgets will be distributed tomorrow so that we can work on those. That's the last set of budgets for us for the next five-year plan.
Thank you, Mr. Hubert, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Bear Duti, please chief.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report. I think you are aware, but for the, for the public, we're asking everybody to save the date of November 6, 2015, for our geared-for-success manufacturing showcase, which will be held at the Medina County Fairgrounds from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will have over 60 manufacturing exhibits, which will represent Medina County manufacturing companies, 3D printing demos, and a mobile welding lab. The mission of this event is to raise awareness and educate residents, students and businesses as to the economic importance and career opportunities for our manufacturing industry. We have a keynote speaker that is coming. His name is Thomas Frey. He's a senior futurist at the Da Vinci Institute from Colorado and Google's top-rated futurist speaker. He works closely with a board of visionaries to develop original research studies. So we're hoping that more people will come and join us to learn more about the future of manufacturing job outlooks and innovations that can help them translate trends into unique business opportunities. The tickets to see Thomas Frey, the registration is $40. That would include a breakfast. And then when the exhibits, the manufacturing exhibits, that will be open to the public at no cost. Currently, we are partnering with the Medina County Economic Development Corporation, Leadership Medina County, the Three Chambers of Commerce from Medina, Wadsworth and Brunswick, as well as the other two cities, Wadsworth and Brunswick. And then we're also partnering with all school districts throughout Medina County. They will each bring roughly a busload of students to come and visit with the manufacturing companies to learn more about the career opportunities. What it's not, it is not a job fair, so this is more about education and awareness than an actual job fair. So if you could mark your calendars for November 6, we'd love to have all of council to attend. And the city will be one of the sponsors, and we're working with Wadsworth and Brunswick to also sponsor the event. So we hope that you can join us. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Peener, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item. Last Monday, August 17th, we started the trial period for our afternoon staffing shift with the fire department. First week went very well, and I will continue to update you as the trial period progresses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woodley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things. The Parks Department recently completed the playground renovation at J.C. Park. We installed new equipment, slides, a swing set, and improved the surface. So if you have time, enjoy the weather and stop out the East End Disturbage Drive to check it out. Secondly, next week, we'll, we will begin turf renovation on the square. So two sections of the square will be roped off for approximately seven to eight weeks while we replant the grass and allow it to get established. And then lastly, as the warm weather continues, the splash pads have had extensive use, but unfortunately, after Labor Day, they'll only be open day-to-day, weather permitting. So Labor Day is the closing time for the splash pads, unless the weather's decent. Thank you.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a very busy summer for the Building Department. The numbers are up for both construction permits and property maintenance code enforcement. Most of the construction permits were for homeowners investing into their own properties. This includes renovations, additions and repairs. The numbers are fairly equal in all the council wards. Last item, St. Matthew's Church here in town is looking to help in the community. They have a group of volunteers ready to help the elderly or disabled. They are looking for a couple of home repair projects to do in the month of September. It would include labor only. If anyone is interested, please call Tom Cromer in the Building Department at 330-722-9032. This ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Updates on some of our projects. The Lake Road project is very close to being completed. We anticipating the road being open within two weeks, if not sooner. Recently, we did start our concrete street repair project, as well as our crack ceiling. Crack ceiling will only take a couple of weeks, but this concrete street repair will take probably up to eight weeks. It's all throughout the city. Appreciate everyone's cooperation during those times. And lastly, an update, we met with Columbia Gas about their project here, just in northwestern part of the downtown area. They project, they report the project's going well and they anticipate being completed somewhere around the first of October. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're continuing to work on storm sewer issues throughout the city within the infrastructure. Additionally, we're working on street repair on areas where water breaks occurred in asphalt. I believe those have been completed today. The other part of our asphalt resurfacing program will include South Prospect, South Prospect Street between Smith and Lafayette, and I believe that will take place later this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Conwell, anything? I'll just check. Sitting down there. Notes and communications and petitions? We have none, unfinished business? There's none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city, due to portion of council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir?
Hi there. My name is David Frazier. I live at 515. I've been a resident there of West Smith Road for about five years now. Since that time I've been there, I've been noticing an increase in traffic for the large trucks that go by, the traffic that does go there, there is an excessive speed on it. I don't know if there's any sort of zoning or anything that can be looked into, the amount of traffic that's been going on. My neighbor Joe has taken account of all the vehicles that's gone by. Do you think you can give me the numbers of what you've counted?
Just on the trucks that I took, it was the commercial semis. And there was from 9:00 o'clock this morning till 12:30, there was 46 trucks that went by. And that just seems extreme. And it seems like West Smith is the primary road. When we have Lafayette and we also have Route 18, to me, that would be more accessible to get to where they're going. And the majority of these trucks, I don't have a radar detector or nothing, but you can pretty well judge the speeds that these people are going. And they're going relatively fast.
Okay, I think the, it's 515, is that, what cross street is that by? Is that Prospect or?
It's the third house down going west from Prospect.
Third house down, okay. Because I know a lot of the traffic, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, on West Smith Road is a, is a, is a road that trucks are permitted to get to the state routes. And Owens Corning, I think, has a lot of vehicles coming from their plant and other plants in that area traversing. Do they both go down Lake Road and West Smith Road, I believe?
Right. There are some troubles. You say, why don't they use Lafayette or one or the other? Sometimes it's the turning radius, you know, with, with the amount of traffic. So they can use Smith, they can use Lafayette. We also built an extension of Commerce Drive from Drug Mart out to 18 to give them another alternative to get in there. But right now, we have the Lake Road construction, which is one-way southbound, so that's causing some additional traffic, probably your way, because some are coming on Smith because they can only go south on Lake if they're, if they're between Lafayette. And we expect that to open probably in the next two to three weeks, and hopefully you'll see some of this alleviate. The other thing I would share with you is, I've made a note, the police chief is here. We'll have the officers come down and use a radar gun and check both car traffic and truck traffic and make sure they're within a tolerance of what the posted level is. Thank, thank you for bringing it to our attention. See, that's another problem too, because I have seen law enforcement down in the area checking radar. Yes. So they're, they are doing it. Okay. As soon as the car sees them, they just slam on the brakes. Sure. Well, see, in the state of Ohio, traffic enforcement has to be done in a marked vehicle. And, you know, the officer has to be out where the radar or laser is in a position where it can directly shoot the traffic. In other words, we can't be like back in a driveway because then that angle skews the numbers. So there are some limitations, but we'll do the best we can to try to get a handle on it. Okay, sir? Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have Resolution 10215, a resolution congratulating Andrew J. Root on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? We're going to vote on it, then I'm going to come down and present a resolution to you, Andrew. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Resolution 102-15 passes seven zero.
And Andrew, if you could come up to the front? Thank you. So if TV can see you, this would be great. Okay, Andrew, we have a resolution, and I'm going to read the resolution to you. A resolution congratulating Andrew J. Root on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Andrew J. Root is currently a member of Eagle Scout Troop 501 from Medina United Methodist Church Great Trails Council. And whereas Andrew J. Root has gone through the Boy Scouts of America, BSA National Youth Leadership Training, NYLT program, and is a member of the Order of the Arrow, OA. And whereas, as a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character and leadership development, Andrew J. Root will receive his Eagle Scout Award, the highest award attainable in scouting. And now therefore be it resolved by the city, by council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that the Medina City Council hereby commends Andrew J. Root for his outstanding contribution to his community and Eagle Scout Troop 501 in attaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Andrew J. Root in recognition of his hard work and dedication in obtaining this award. And that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Congratulations on attaining Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
One question I have is, what was your Eagle Scout project?
It was a Gaga ball pit. It's like an octagonal ring that kids can play Israeli dodgeball in. It is a, a team building game. And it's fun for all ages. So I did that for the United Church of Christ on the square. It's where I go.
And where's this, is the project located? Where's the project located? Is it on, at the church?
At the church.
At the church, council. Okay. Well, thank you. I think the mayor has something for you too, but again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we also have a proclamation from the mayor's office that reads, whereas a congratulations is awarded to Andrew J. Root for achieving the highest award in scouting, earning the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas less than 4% of all Boy Scouts earn the highest rank in scouting. Whereas this award is the result of many years of hard work resulting in outstanding developments in character, leadership, ability, citizenship and physical fitness. And whereas his dedication, planning and execution resulted in a substantial contribution to the Gaga Ball Court at Medina United Methodist Church. We'll fix that for you. That should be the United Church of Christ Congregational. And whereas Andrew is to be commended on the determination and dedication he has extended during the years he has worked toward this goal of becoming an Eagle Scout. Now therefore, I Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, to hereby congratulate Andrew J. Root for all the work he has put forth during the years he has participated in scouting and on his persistence in achieving this highest award in scouting. I know this recognition will always be remembered as a high point in your life. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is the mayor taking those back from you again? Okay. Just checking. Okay. Thanks. Congratulations. Ordinance 10315, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the audible traffic signal project at two intersections around public square.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This project is being funded through a CDBG grant. There is no city contributions. It's entirely covered by the grant. It'll install, we have, currently we have two audible traffic signals on the square. These will be placed at the other two corners of the square.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Hamel?
Thank you. The site impaired group comes over from Summit County to our square pretty regular, and they're very thankful for the two that we had, but it was also one of their particular requests that we try to do all four sides so that they're not limited as to where those that are sight inhibited could cross, could cross over to the various stores. So this will make our entire square and access to it usable by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on your ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 103-15 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 10415, ordinance amending section 114707J of the zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to electronic message center signs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Mendel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the ordinance review for a public hearing that was held on July 13th by the city council to make this amendment to the sign code for the planning and zoning code, specifically 114707J. Talks about you can only have single color electronic message centers. This amendment, which was approved by the, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission in May, and then forwarded to planning, to the city council, would allow for full color electronic message centers. It would not, there would not be any changes to maximum size, location, frequency of copy. This is simply just to amend it to allow for full color. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on your ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 104-15 passes seven zero.
Resolution 10515, a resolution accepting the donation of legal services from Walker &amp; Jack Company, LPA, to file a trademark application and copyright application for the bicentennial logo for the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mayor Hamel?
We are requesting the emergency clause so that we can get this protection in place and start getting some of the information packets and brochures and whatnot, all, all going with the bicentennial. And we're concerned with doing that and releasing the logo ahead of time for fear that somebody will then copy it and use it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Comments? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on a resolution.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 105-15 passes seven zero.
Resolution 10615, a resolution of the council of the city of Medina, Medina County, state of Ohio, certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated and the funds to satisfy the obligation and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, this is paying the deductible unemployment liability insurance. The reason there's not a previous PO is it wasn't something that could be planned for. It is, as mentioned, appropriated.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on a resolution.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Resolution 106-15 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 10715, an ordinance amending ordinance number 214 passed December 8, 2014, amendments to the 2015 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a number of donations that are passed through that we have to do.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's, uh, a number of donations that are passed through that we have to do. There's a increase for a, um, where we're closing an old PO and then there's a number of reductions.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Ordinance one oh-seven dash fifteen passes seven zero.
Ordinance one oh-eight dash fifteen, ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, uh, for people who don't know this, the city owns a rail, railroad. We have three, uh, customers in the city, three businesses that use that. It also, uh, one of the reasons the city's always maintained it is that it's, uh, available for a number of other properties in the city, which we've considered to be a, an economic development benefit that if somebody wants to locate here and needs rail access, we can provide that at a number of locations. The city contributes to this and then the three users do as well. This is our contribution for fourteen and fifteen.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb. Ordinance one oh-eight dash fifteen passes seven zero.
Resolution one oh-nine fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for the East Smith Road reconstruction project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it, it be added at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. Uh, the application we're filing with the OPWC would be for the reconstruction of East Smith Road between Court Street and Jefferson. Uh, as everyone probably knows, that roadway is in terrible condition. It'll include replacing the existing water lines and storm sewers as well. We're asking for the emergency clause. We submitted this, uh, prior to the council break. Uh, at the time, we didn't know the particulars about, uh, the amount of money we were eligible for and that sort of thing. We found those out here recently. Um, the, the application is due September fourth, so we do need approval prior to then.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution or emergency clause? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution one oh-nine dash fifteen passes seven zero.
Council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilberg.
Um, we have a combined Ward one, Ward two meeting on September first, uh, Tuesday evening at seven PM at four-twenty East Union Street, which is Claggett Middle School. Uh, so if you want to get out and find out what's going on in Ward one and two and voice your opinions, uh, feel free to join us.
Thank you. Any additional council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colosar?
Two things. Um, you know, um, over our break, um, my wife had a, uh, class reunion in a twenty-five year and I just wanted to say thank you to Jim Shields for his efforts, whether it be touring or allowing alumni to come back and tour the high school or him teaching the elementary kids here at city hall about how Medina functions or the city hall functions or just the, um, how the high school's doing, the schools. Um, you know, I sat back and did the tour and listened to Jim and Jimmy make me proud to not only be a Medina alumni, but you continue to give back to this community and maybe not everybody sees it, but, uh, you did a heck of a job, um, giving the tour for, um, people that haven't been back probably since they graduated high school and how highly you still speak of this community and all the hard work you put in. I, I much appreciate it. I'm very proud to work next to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And also, uh, the International Fest I, uh, attended on Saturday and I also want to say thank you to the Ma, Main Street Medina and all the sponsors, uh, that took part in that. I think it was a great function. And the city of Medina made the Weather Channel, which I'm a big Weather Channel fan, but I just thought it was cool that Matt Widerhold, um, promoted us nationally to a, a national audience and I just thought it was really neat that our beloved community, is on the national stage and just, I, I just reach out to everybody that took part in that International Fest. Uh, it was a, a great function. I just want to say thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? You're good. Oh, I have one. On Wednesday, September ninth, we have a budget hearing. I know you're all waiting to hear about that. At five-thirty here at city hall, so, uh, as Mr. Durham said, we start the general fund budgets. We're about two-thirds of the way through the, the various budgets and we'll finish them up, uh, prior to November and then discuss the whole overall picture of the city of Medina and the five-year plan ahead of us. So if you'd like to come to learn a little bit about the finances of the city of Medina, join any budget meeting, you'll love them. Uh, with that, council is adjourned and in a few minutes here, we're gonna have the state of the city address by Mayor Dennis Hanwell, if you'd like to stick around. Thank you.